I'd like to call the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. The order is Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. Time is nine o'clock. If I'd like to stand for the Blanche Police.
I plead your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call real please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Redd.
Here.
First thing we have is a public hearing. Notice of public to amend speed ordinance. And you are...
Yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner, by advertising in the newspaper for a public hearing, we had received complaints about people speeding and needed signs posted and we discovered there were not ordinance that sat on these three different roads. So, we're looking at establishing speed limits for County Road 388 East, County Road 700 West, and County Road 1100 North. We did traffic study on those different roads and we did recommendations based off those traffic studies.
Do we have anybody here to speak for or against? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion of second. Steve, can you call real please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next up, we have appointments. We have appointment to the Public Defender Board, Daniel Strugel.
Make a motion when make the appointment.
Second.
Have a motion of second for appointment. Steve, can you call real please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have approval of minutes for August 20th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of second for approval of minutes. Steve, can you call real?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Next, we have presentation to the Commissioners, RQAW.
Morning Commissioners, Director Pete Peterson, RQAW. I have with me Eric Wefflin, our Director of Architecture. We are going to go through today this schematic design portion which has been occurring over the last 30 days or so since the Commissioners and Council approved the initial design contract on the old Asens Building jail redesign. Again, I'm going to have Eric go through this in detail. If there's any questions you have, I'd urge you to stop right away and go walk through the process which we've been undertaking over that time and talking with all the stakeholders, etc. So, with that, I'll give you Eric Wefflin.
Morning.
Morning, Eric.
As was mentioned, we spent a lot of time talking to all the user groups and stakeholders and talking about the programmatic needs. And so, what that is, is we got a very defined list of space needs that we wanted to accommodate in the existing building. Then, we've spent time laying out those spaces within the building and working towards making it as functional and operationally efficient as possible. And so, where we are right now is after several of those meetings is with this plan. And if everyone, is everybody familiar with the layout of the building? So, the main entrance is towards the bottom of that plan.
Which one is it? Let's turn it on first.
Is this top building?
Sure.
I don't know if you can see the, so right here is the main entrance. And that is where all security for the entire facility would be. So, you've got consolidated security. You've got one entrance, one security checkpoint. From there, the public can move to this side and to that side. And this is where all of the courts are, is on this main level. Now, you might see some of these blue corridors around those courts. And what that is, is staff circulation. So, what we've been able to do is separate public circulation from staff circulation from inmate circulation. So, for public safety, staff safety, inmate safety, staff safety works very well. You'll see on some of these plans that what we're able to do is accommodate more than 75 seats in each of the courtrooms, which is a big deal for you. As you know, the existing courts are small and don't have appropriate space for litigation gallery and seating area. So, in each of those courts, we're accommodating significantly larger numbers than what you're able to accommodate today. So, when you're seating a jury and those types of things, that space is really, really critical. This central area right here is where all of the clerk can be consolidated, all the clerk files, all the clerk space can be consolidated in one spot, including child support. And then, there's additional file spaces. You know, there are files spread out in several areas and we're able to consolidate those all into one area. The orange area back here to the back is where we've got space for some jail components and sheriff's office. You've got that existing auditorium. A portion of this will be renovated right here, this pink corner right here, into a vehicular sallyport where their detainees would be brought into intake and booking, which is that old cafeteria area. You've got an existing kitchen and a portion of that kitchen where they had some serving areas would be converted into laundry. So, again, you've got a lot of infrastructure right there that we're able to take advantage of. We don't have to, we don't have to create a new kitchen and build it from scratch. There's one existing in the building. So, from a dollar standpoint and a cost effectiveness standpoint, that's a nice advantage. We've got housing here in the central area. That's a couple hundred beds that we're able to put into that area.
Gems.
And that's the existing gems that were converted into housing. We've got housing here, which is the old swimming pool. So, those are dormitory beds that are converted into there. Then, we've got that housing addition out here on the edge. And that's 256 beds. One of the nice things about the way that all of this lays out is that programming space, attorney meeting space, exam rooms, things that are critical for the care of inmates and the safety of staff are all very efficiently laid out in this area. Are there any questions about the first floor plan?
Yeah, I have a question. The auditorium, we were hoping to use maybe for the public. Why would you have a prisoner going down to the sheriff's office?
There's not. So, you can see right here...
I thought the blue you said was...
The blue is for staff.
The blue is for staff.
I'm sorry.
And so, what that means is that beyond that, beyond those doors, so the public heading back to the, during normal operational hours, so let's say between nine and four o'clock, everyone will come through this main security checkpoint and then would circulate back and there would be a control point there. Now, if after hours, you had, let's say, training, outside agency training or something like that, there are doors back here that can be controlled independently and you would have access directly into that auditorium and not have to cross paths with inmate staff or anyone. And then, after hours for the jail, let's say that somebody wanted to do video visitation or put money on commissary or something like that, there's a separate entrance right here where all of that would be contained right here in this little kind of dark blue area right there and not have to go back into any of the building. So, it's controlled after hours. Any other questions?
So, are we making the decision today to move the whole clerk's office?
I don't think that any decisions are being made today. All we're doing is giving you an update on where we are from a design standpoint.
We can still tweak them.
And I'd like to reiterate the fact that we were able to meet with everyone that was talked about going out to this facility and we were able to accommodate all of the space needs and have some future growth available for all of those components. The upper level, so there's an elevator and two main stairs right off of that central security checkpoint as you come in. So, there's a stair down at this end of the corridor and one down at this end of the corridor. And up there, you have community corrections. You can see the large classrooms and community corrections. So, we're able to accommodate, that's classroom space for like 120 people up there that we're able to accommodate. Different office spaces for community corrections there. We've got, in this area here, this green is probation. And again, one of the big advantages that we have with the way that we're laying this out is that as you come up to each of those departments, you would come into a waiting space off of the main public circulation space and enter into a waiting area where then access back into the offices would be controlled. So, you don't have, you don't come in off the main corridors right into staff space. So, there's that buffer that can be secure and controlled and we can, we can design those with glass and transaction tables and speaking devices and those types of things to enhance security if we want to. At the other end of the building, you've got prosecutor area. And then, right here, you can see those white seats. 4D Court is right off of that corridor and it's immediately adjacent to family support. And again, from a court standpoint, we were able to accommodate the appropriate number of seats that we were aiming for. So, that too is good there. And then, you've got some staff areas back here off of the kind of the jail end of the building. And that includes sheriff spaces. So, we've got investigator spaces and other components like evidence storage, lab, drug task force, those kinds of things. At the other end of the building, there's a fitness room with access to some showers and staff restrooms. On that upper level, these large restrooms will be controlled so the staff has access to those instead of anyone that wants to walk up to them. And then, up there, we also have some jail administrative offices over here, these paint rooms here. So, that's the jail commander and some components like that. One of the things that we're working towards is having, you see these gold control rooms? This is all at an upper level. We've talked about how housing will be designed where we've got the tiered cells and elevated observation points. All of those will be interconnected at that level. So, from a staff security standpoint, they can move freely at an elevated level that is different from the detention, secure corridors on the lower level. Are there any questions about any of these areas? And like I said, each of these areas have additional space. So, there's the opportunity to grow in each of these spaces. Any questions about the second floor?
Karen, any question?
No, not now. Looks good.
Really, from a presentation standpoint, I mean, that's kind of short and sweet, but really, we just wanted to give you an update, let you know that we've been meeting with everyone and we've got all the spaces that were necessary for them to carry out their day-to-day activities accommodated in the facility. And when we started this project, we kind of, you know, expected that. I mean, that was the goal, was to be able to accommodate everything that we needed for the next 15 to 20 years in those offices. And that's what we've been able to accommodate.
And really, wanted to take an opportunity right now to thank not only the Commissioners, but thank the staff from Delaware County because without their, and particularly Emily, where's Emily? She's running around over there. I mean, without her kind of coordinating everything, this work doesn't happen, right? Because we can lay something on paper and until you guys come back and tell us yes, no, it doesn't really do us any good. So, we've had a lot of meetings, multiple meetings, multiple tours of this building. We'll continue to do so as necessary, but the staff has been tremendous.
I was glad to see her name added to the list. I do have a question. As you've been talking to the different departments, have you asked how much of their current equipment can be transferred or...
Yes, we're waiting on a list back from each department. During the second round of interviews that we did going through all the spaces, we had done an initial schematic kind of design Eric and his group did. We had a second round of interviews where we actually went back and in that process, we asked them, we needed a list of everything that they were taking and the things that they were missing. So, we're working on that as well.
And what percent is carpet and monolium or have you talked about that at all?
Over there yet or not, but...
No, I would anticipate that most of the offices would have carpet.
And are you talking the new tiles that everybody's using?
Carpet tiles, yeah. Yep. Yeah, but that's a, that's a next level of design.
It won't be the 70 shag carpet.
Only in the Commissioners' office in town.
Thanks, guys.
Eric, can you sort of explain too how the pods will be connected?
Yeah, so, let me go back real quick. Are you talking about the second level?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, the goal is right now, so you've got this sheriff component right here. So, you're going to have some sheriff's, investigators' offices up here. And you can see that blue corridor right here. That's all going to be controlled, right? That's staff side. So, no public can get back into those corridors. And then, you see this green line right here? There will be a connector there. And from this control point, you can walk down that little corridor right there onto a mezzanine walkway, down this corridor, and connect into this control point and obviously access that one. So, at that control level, there's a corridor that goes between each of the control points, which is nice because each of these will be staffed. So, that has a console there and all of the camera monitors and door access control points for everything that's going on here. This one will have control of everything that's going on here and this one will have control of everything that's going on here. And when you're sitting at that console or that console or that console, you can view out through glass into each of these spaces. You've seen this in this before?
Yep.
And so, from there, you've got views down into all of those spaces. Now, what's nice is that, let's assume that there's some type of event, something that goes on in this pod here. Control of this pod can be handed off to this pod. So, you have that flexibility where monitor and control can be switched between each of those and anyone that's staffing this area can come over and help with something over here. So, having that, not having to go down a stair, run down a corridor, run up a stair to get over there is really convenient. It's, time is critical in facilities like this. And so, trying to be as efficient as possible in terms of moving between those control points. And that's something that you don't see in a lot of facilities and that we're able to accommodate here.
And you can actually have one person monitoring those pods, right?
That's right. So, the way that these typically are monitored is that you would have one person sitting at a console here viewing out into each of these dayrooms and monitoring all of those controls. And then, typically, there's a rover that is moving around this pod as well. And you have access between dayrooms and then also in the corridor at the lower level into each of those individual dayroom doors. And that happens at each of those pods.
Just to answer a couple of quick questions that I've heard along the way. Council President Quakemush asked a question. There's a square area there which is completely blank, that that's just nothing but courtyard. Okay, it's going to be left as courtyard. Really, what happens there is because you're building that new building out there, you're actually creating that courtyard because it's there presently. And then, there was a number of things that were written about in the newspaper, including building a 750-bed jail. You can see that this does not accommodate 750 people. The question that the Commissioner has asked us is, what happens in the future? Do we have the land to go ahead and do 750 or show more than the second pod would be? You can easily add another pod right there which adds another 250 X number of people in the future if that were required. And that's a huge if.
Right.
But this is not being designed initially as a 750-bed jail. I want to make sure we're crystal clear about that.
That courtyard could be turned into like outside recreation or...
Absolutely.
It can. And one of the things that we're going to accommodate right out of the gate is that they would be able to, inmates would be able to be moved out into that space if needed. So, there are different things, different reasons why the jail may want to move someone out there. Outdoor rec is a potential, but that will be a secure courtyard.
Miami, question?
Does a kitchen need much attention? Is it big enough right now to handle what?
It's big enough. So, one of the things that we did is we brought on a kitchen consultant that specializes in designing kitchens for facilities like this. And they went in and they accounted for what equipment is there, what equipment is needed. What's nice is all the infrastructure is there. So, power, exhaust, all those types of things. We know that there's things that need to be added, but in terms of available space, there's actually some leftover space so it can grow well into the future for anything that the county would need 50 years from now, 60 years from now, 100 years from now. So...
When the trustees go down to work, I mean, is it secure? Do we have to build a fence on it around the kitchen part or...
So, what you've got is you've got some dormitory space right here where the existing pool is. And what we're envisioning is that that's where inmate workers...
That are left.
...will be housed. And then, in this corridor right here, what we'll do is we'll create a sallyport at the end. So, that's where there's two doors between them and outside. So, that'll be controlled. And then, the same thing occurs, you know, in this corridor and this corridor. So, technically, they can come out, move right down this corridor and be in laundry and kitchen. Laundry and kitchen are immediately adjacent to each other. That's where inmate workers are going to be working. So, monitoring them and limiting movement to those spaces is very controlled and very, I guess, focused in one area, which is nice. They're not spread out.
We have had a number of MVP contractors going through this building at nauseam, looking at all the mechanical, electrical plumbing. We should get that report back very quickly. The initial report came back tremendous. All the lines in terms of plumbing and waste and etc., etc. have been tremendous. We kind of expected for a 20-year-old building to see a little bit more, but it was in phenomenal condition because it was taken care of during that period of time as well. So, not to say that there aren't going to be a list of things that maybe need to be addressed, but overall, when you're looking at a building of this age, I don't know that we could find a better building to start work with, quite frankly.
And Eric, I know that you've been talking to some people about solar. Is that going well or...
So, the initial conversation is going to be out there at the site. At this point, it's a discussion, getting some feedback from them. So, that's just part of the process. We just engage them, but haven't made any, you know, determinations or decisions or anything. What we'd like to do is just get the feedback and then we'll report that back to you.
Somebody recommended to me that we look at just putting it on the ground instead of on the roof.
And that's what, those are the kinds of things that that meeting would bring to the discussion and then we would report that back.
And then, has a green roof been spoken about helping? Because we have so much stormwater runoff that we're paying.
So, there's different, there's some different roofs on the existing building. So, there's a shingle roof and I don't think that we can do anything with that. One of the things that was nice about that was that the report we got back from the roofing contractor was that it was in really good shape and doesn't require any immediate...
What's that?
Up here on these waves right here, there's...
Through the architectural elevation up towards the front of the building to give it character.
And then, further back here is where there's a flat roof. And actually, they think that that really requires limited, there's a, there's going to be, need to be a new surfacing of that, but limited work on it as well. And so, any enhancement beyond that, I think, would be part of that ongoing discussion that we would certainly be happy to have with the Commissioners and entertain. But at this time, there isn't a lot of work that has to be done to the roof. So, all of those things would be enhancements. I think it would be a different discussion if we needed to go, if we found that we needed to go in and completely tear off a roof, but...
Part of the next process, Commissioner, is that we're going to come to you not only with the costing methods and everything else that's going on, but we're going to give you a layout of those MVP systems and all the systems, including the roof, and saying, here's what you currently have, here's the expected life of what's left, here's what it is to replace, and we're going to leave that to Commissioners to decide, yes, that can stay, no, that we want replaced, etc., etc. So, that's in the process of being worked on.
And your recommendations?
Well, yes, our recommendations will be there included, so...
And then, if there's any enhancements beyond kind of the...
Like solar.
Right.
Right. I do want to point out, and again, I wish we could take, you know, 50 people over there, but I think I mentioned it to Commissioner King on 9/11, quite a date in history, but on 9/11, the Hamelin County, which is very much like the pod over on the side, they are going to start dropping those steel cells in there that day. So, if the Commissioners would like to see that or maybe a couple of limited council people want to get down there, we can coordinate that for you. You can watch these cells go in, you get to see central control, you get to be, watch this thing be built because that pod structure is very, almost a similar, very close to being the same thing as what we're talking about here. So, you get to see it live and it's just right down to our Hamelin County.
I would like to go and see that.
And then, we'll get you signed up. So, James, I'm going to leave you to coordinate that with everybody else. If you get me names, we'll make sure we have hard hats and glasses and everything else for you when you get there.
Jenny, can you send an email out to all the council members and my team?
I've just been concerned on how many holes you have to knock out to get the pods in the existing building.
The pods are not going to go in the existing building.
They're not?
No.
So, cells will all be out here and then we can get some dormitories that are all in this space here. What was nice is the layout that you see there takes advantage of the existing construction. So, that, there's that existing wall between the gyms that's actually...
Okay, so that'll be more of the old fashioned...
No, it's not. I wouldn't necessarily call it old fashioned. They completely redesigned it. It's just in a dormitory style. It's not in a lockdown mechanism. I think the sheriff would love to have a lockdown at every single one of these small podular units, if you will. But, but the reality of it is, is that we still need to make sure we deliver you the number of beds you want, okay, and the costs that you want, right? And I think if we were looking at any future type of expansion for cells, it would probably be easier getting it into the pool area, quite frankly, than to drag it into the old gymnasium, right? So, and again, the good news about the way these things are designed is that you have the ability to go back in there and do that, right? So, and again, you've got the ability to add on to the pod as well and do another pod.
I missed, I thought we talked about that.
What we did, I think, was just looking at the logistics of it and getting dusted and dried and ready to bet, trying to move that stuff in there. I mean, these things are pretty mobile, they come on the back of semi trucks, but then you've got to worry about how the heck to get it through an existing doorway and how much roofing, you know, structural do we take out to get them in and...
The thing that is important to note is that even in the gym and the pool, those are designed with that central control elevated with views out. So, when you're talking about, you know, how are those designed? They are designed just like the pod. They just are dormitory housing and not cells. But you still have that one central control up above that that looks out basically 360 degrees into each of those dayrooms.
And also allows you to, one observation. It also allows you to bring in, because there's a lot of conversation going on about the rehab portions of these things, right? And the trustee portion. So, it gives you a lot more flexibility that way, right? Again, I appreciate everything from the Sheriff's Department who's been tremendous to work with. They like to keep everybody safe and lock everybody down, I get it. But from, you know, kind of a future look, we thought this offered the best, you know, kind of flexibility for the county and for the sheriff's office.
And it gives a prisoner something to look forward to.
It gives them, and it certainly gives them a carrot, if you will, to not being locked down for a good period of time, to make your way over to a little bit less confined area. But all those are still sight and sound separated so you could put different classifications because they can't see in between those individual, even the...
Dormitory units, right.
What kind of material is it? I mean, steel, tin?
In the dormitories, there will be block walls that divide out the dayrooms. And then, the bunks are just like what you'd expect, the bunks.
Well, I think they are block.
Yep, there are bunk beds in there and the bunk beds are separated with dividers. And then, there's restroom facilities in there and showers and...
Something.
Anything else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Move to contracts and agreements for approval. Melanie, you're up. Delaware County Recorder, run all things.
I don't know if you have seen them. I've sent them all to John Brook and I'm assuming that he has approved them. The first one is a rental agreement for a scanner. We have some old index books that are not documents, but it's indexes that tell you where to find documents. And just because I recognize the importance of all of that historical information, if anything would happen to our books, I'm trying to get some of that scanned in to where it can be accessed on the computer. I've also been working with Jim Fluke on how we can make that happen. That's the first agreement. It'll be a three-year rental agreement with Eastern Engineering for a scanner. We felt like that was the best option rather than purchasing a scanner, just simply because then once we get done, we're not creating any more books, then we would have a piece of equipment that was going to become obsolete. So, we are... So we are looking at a three-year rental agreement with Eastern Engineering. The second one is a scan project through my software company, Fiddler Technologies, and that is the actual documents. Currently, they have digitized back through 1980 and we actually have on our computer, we are working on 1981 now. Once they get them digitized, we have to go in and index the names so that we can access them, make them accessible on the computer. And we are getting ready to do a project with your approval that will actually digitize them back through 1965, all of our documents, so that we can get those indexed and make them accessible on the computers rather than the microfiche. And all of this will be paid out of the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund.
I'll make a motion to approve both agreements.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Steve, can you call it real quick?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thanks for getting everything up to date.
Next, we'll move to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance number 2018-010, ordinance to amend an ordinance regarding traffic on certain public streets in Delaware County.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2018-010.
Second.
I have a motion of second for introduction. Steve, can you call it real quick?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, we'll move to department heads and elected officials. Angie, you have something.
Commissioners, I would like to request the board to declare an emergency for bridge number 46. Bridge number 46. It's located on County Road 550 East, between Eaton Almea Pike and County Road 1,000 north. Some people refer to this like cemetery road, but the official road name is 550 East. Recently, the bridge was overloaded and after inspections with our engineer, we recommended to close it. And we'd like to get this open as quickly as possible. This is a main thoroughfare for farmers and it's harvest season, so we'd like to get started. I anticipate our bridge crew to be installing the structure, but I'll know more about it next meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for a merger.
Second.
You have a motion of second. Steve, can you call it real quick?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jason?
Jason Rogers, Delaware County Mercy Management Director. Good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to ask you to consider a executive session so we could discuss some employee issues and some things going on at EMS. So I wanted to try to get to you before the meeting this morning, but if you could look into your calendars in the near future, next, probably in the month, some things that I'd like to discuss, reference them, please.
Go ahead and get with John and set that up.
All right, thank you.
Have anybody else? We'll move to payment of claims in an amount of $1,855,774.76.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Steve, can you call it real quick?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Next, do we have any comments from the public?
I'm Stephen Shreeb. At the last meeting, I asked about getting an ordinance change regarding the Health Department's ability to refuse subject permits on tract 10 acres or larger. What's the update on that?
John get, did John get with the...
I've heard nothing.
Do you know anything about that? I know we're still looking into it. Do you know if the current sewer line goes right in front of your house along County Road?
Yes.
Okay. That was a big issue, but it's something like 17 points something acres. Is that what you have?
It's 26.
Okay, 26.
So if you guys get the information, can you...
Yep, we'll reach out to you. Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else? If not, entertain the motion to recess.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.